Good evening. Welcome to the
That was your gavel.
Whatever it is here, September 23rd. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which extends one nation under God in the visible liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. A little open, the open forum portion of our meeting. Anyone here for open forum? I see our assessor is here for open forum.
I just wanted to kind of give you an update on the upcoming auction for the land located off of Central Street, the Hanson Land. So we have a date of November 7th. It will be here in the building, in this room, I believe.
It'll be warmer in here than out there.
Hmm?
It'll be warmer in here than out.
It'll be warmer, right. I was trying to remember, we had it outside, but that was right during the 2020 pandemic. I could not remember at first.
That's why it was outdoors, yes.
Yeah, so yeah, we're using same auctioneers that have done. So this is the third chapter of this, this land, and it's the final one. So once this occurs, all of, basically all of the land that was lost in limbo for all these years will be owned by someone other than the town. And then, as you saw probably through the, you know, Oak Street, what Oak Street looks like with that commercial buildings and some industrial. But so that's been a good, you know, a great way to solve the problem of, we've got some nice commercial buildings, some nice, balances the residential side where we always wanted a little more commercial
Right.
to help with the tax, the split, split. So anyway, yeah, so that's it. It will be, it's 31, almost 32 acres. It's, as you go, you'll see signs up within probably a week or so from the auctioneers. And it's on the right side, you'll see the last house, it's a white house. Then we left, the town is going to continue to own a parcel, which is, it will go all the way back, and it's about three acres for future use if we need it. And it creates like, because it's industrial, it's the end of the residential and going into the industrial. What we hope is it's a watershed area, but we passed a updated zoning motion at the last meeting, town meeting, where the overlay district, which is for the ARPUD, the retirement community, it can't, because it's a watershed act, it wasn't able to go over that, but we passed a bill, the town did, that, a new law that said that if they had a certain type of septic system.
Right, so it's a package treatment plant.
A package treatment plant, then somebody could develop it that way. So that's our highest hope, to tell you the truth, that something like that goes in there. But we'll see. We have some interested parties that I've heard through the grapevine, so we'll, we'll see what happens.
Same ones.
Hmm?
Same ones.
Little bit different.
No group.
Nope, we've got some, some, and I've also like gotten in touch with some of the engineers that know the people that develop and do things like this. So we're trying to do it, trying to get it out there. And it'll be advertised in the Boston Globe and the Enterprise. And it will, I think, be in, in like a, it's not MLS, because MLS is more residential. There's some commercial, but LoopNet offers like bigger, bigger parcels like that. And that, that's what we hope to, to get in here and get the highest price for the, at the auction. So I just wanted to give you an update, and we'll have some information online once we finish up within the next week and a half or so. And I'll just, I printed out some maps, I can, I figured I'd give them to you. I'll have Charlie forward them to you, and you just have an idea if someone starts asking any questions and stuff. So that, that was it, I just wanted to.
Is it just one large parcel?
Yeah.
Are we dividing it into key services?
No, right, so it's a total of 426 parcels. And I don't know if you can see it, I could have sent it to you.
We're combining them into.
Combining it as one. So this is, excuse me. It's hard to, as you're driving down Central Street into Hanson, it's, it's over here. So it's all along the right side as you're coming down that, you come, you crest the hill, and then you come down. And it's all over there, and it's 31 total, it equals about 32 acres. There's all these small little parcels, they're being sold as small little parcels, but in one big lot. And that's how we did the other ones. We had like crazy lots, because we had to have groupings, and different owners owned those. Where we had, East Bridgewater owns most of these, there's two small parcels in the back that are, we took as land of low value, and they have to be auctioned off a little differently. So they'll go after. And, yeah, and that's it. So that was the easiest way to do it. We'll have this plan available, and we're also recording, it's an 81X plan, and it's just kind of a, a plan that you put at the registry, and it would refer to a book and a page. So if someone wanted to go look at it, it kind of shows all that land. It's not just the land that we're auctioning, it's the, this section of the Hanson Land. So it's just nice to have it all surveyed, we had it surveyed, engineered, and so you have the correct boundaries, and that'll just be recorded. It makes it a little easier than continuously putting this 426 lots, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. So I, I think that'll make it a little bit easier in the, people finding out.
It's worked in the past, so.
Yeah, exactly.
Yep.
Yep.
Thanks, Paula.
Anything else, good? Okay.
Anyone else for open forum? Seeing none, we'll close open forum, and we will welcome Paul Umano. Please take a seat.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, members of the committee. Happy to be here on behalf of Old Colony Planning Council. My name is Paul Umano, I'm our Senior Grants Development Specialist. I'm with OCPC for about nine months, and I'm here to give you all an update on your most recent annual report. It's a little bit different than typical fiscal year, we're looking at FY '23. But as part of the work I do, I assist the town with your annual reports, of course, a yearly annual report presentation, in addition to your grant applications, of course, your final report once your projects are completed and closed up. So I just wanted to go over a little bit the five criteria, just to see where things stand in terms of that. As part of being a green community, you're required to maintain those, that designation throughout. So one of the first big ones is related to Criteria One, and the as-of-right siding designation as it relates to facilities. So there's three different options that municipalities can choose when they become designated. One is related to renewable alternative energy generating facilities, the second is related to renewable alternative energy research and development facilities, and the third is related to renewable or alternative energy manufacturing facilities. So for you all, you've chosen as part of your designation, research and development, and that has remained steady and has not changed. Criteria Two related, is related to expedited permitting. So if you're permitting, let's say, a solar PV field or something related to that fact, you have 12 months to do so. So it's a quicker expedited format to do that. And towns have the option of doing that through local rules and regulations, or through MGLC 43D. But for a majority of the communities in our region, it's done through local rules and regulations, which you all have done and chosen as part of Criteria Two. The next one is Criteria Three, related to energy use. So you all have done a fantastic job when it comes to reducing your energy from your baseline levels. You're all designated in fiscal 2019. From fiscal 2019 to '23, you're at 23% reduction when it comes to municipal buildings. You're right on track for open space. Streetlights and traffic lights, you're right on target. Vehicles as well, water sewer is right where you need to be. So overall, 26.4% reduction in energy use, and as part of the grant, you're required within five years to be at 20%. So you're, have exceeded and gone beyond expectations. And some of the projects that you guys have worked on, and have been funded through grants, are related to your Council on Aging, so you've done an LED lighting project there. You've done some LED lighting projects related to the junior and senior high school. You've done some with your fire department, most recently the Gordon Mitchell School, transformer replacement and LED lighting. You've done some weatherization LED lighting at your library. And you've also done a town hall motor, motors, excuse me, and variable frequency driver and LED lighting projects. So as you think about some of the high-target buildings in terms of energy use, when we've done your reports in the past, these are the buildings that have come up. And this is a fiscal '23 report, and some of these you've already begun to tackle. So for example, East Bridgewater High School, 34%. So one of the higher-use buildings, followed by the Gordon Mitchell Intermediate School, the Central Elementary School, your water department, and then followed by your town offices. So as you think about applications moving forward, I know I've been working with Charlie and his team in terms of thinking about an application for this coming fall round, obviously the goal is to target some of the high-energy use buildings.
I should say, Paul, for the second and third buildings, the Gordon Mitchell School, we're now in the queue for the MSBA to get a new roof and also replace windows. Those are not green community programs, but both, if we can get that work done during the next couple of years, it should also reduce energy. We know Central, obviously, is a 1950s, 1960s building. We're not going to make any attempts to try and rehab it just for green communities during the next couple of years, because again, we're in the queue, just starting out on the feasibility study for either a new or major renovations over at Central. How that, you know, and we're not, we'll probably be, if it's successful, '28, we would be thinking about a new, having the doors open for the Central Elementary School again. So we're aware of the energy usage, we're hoping, I would think that in three or four years, we'll see something dramatically different with Central. But there's not, we, there's no reason to put more money into something that would be just torn out the next day at this point.
So along those same lines, similarly, those same buildings are your highest emission users as well. So same exact list from the high school at number one to your town offices at number five. So another metric that's used in your annual report is the energy use intensity. So basically, the way to look at this is your energy use divided by the square footage of your buildings. And so these are the top highest energy use intensity buildings that you have per square foot. A little bit of a different list here, so that would be your water department, your town offices, Willow Ave, your fire department, and your Central Elementary School. So think of this as your vehicles mile to the gallon, right? If you were to think of it in terms of buildings. So your highest gas guzzler essentially is the DPW Water Department.
Oh, they do have that there.
Processing water. I suspect, I suspect it includes not just the actual building, but the treatment plants, pumping stations and such.
That represents the water treatment plants in the well site.
So that, what you'll see is, you know, when you look at the number of square foot, feet, those buildings, they're very small relatively speaking, but they're intense on energy uses, because that's all they're doing there. They're not housing people, for instance.
Right, that makes sense, thank you.
So let's see, your criteria four, which is maintaining a fuel-efficient vehicle fleet. You guys have done an amazing job on that as well. So typically, DOE R looks for any violations in that, and there has been none since you've been designated in 2019. So nothing to report on that.
Now, Paul, how is the car policy going to influence what cities and towns can be doing in the future? Because my understanding is that there's a push in Massachusetts for us to be switching over more of our heavy-duty trucks and such, snowplows and everything else during the next couple of years. Yet, my also, my understanding is that those vehicles don't actually exist yet that can do the same work that our internal combustion engine vehicles can.
Yeah, that's a great point. I, I think the overall goal, based on my time being with OCPC and working with DOE R, is to at least ensure some of your fleet is abiding by this, right? Of course, as you know, the technology has not gone to where it needs to be quite yet when it comes to those higher and larger vehicles. So I think as long as you're considering replacing at least, you know, your normal fleet, so to speak, with some battery electric vehicles or hybrid vehicles, then I think that, you know, you meet and satisfy the requirements. I'm sure that may change going in the future, but certainly a question I can address with Lisa Sullivan, your regional coordinator. And then finally, in order to continue compliance with the green communities, is related to the stretch code. And there have been no changes to the stretch code as it relates to East Bridgewater, so we continue to maintain that steadfast. And then some, just some highlights, if you look at your energy use, looking at all three of those factors we looked at under Criteria Three, your overall reduction in total is around 31.6%. So again, you've gone beyond the expectations of the 20% for this fiscal year. And then as you look towards the future, the possibilities are endless for different grant opportunities. So as we look at the program opportunity notice for this fall, you're eligible for up to at least minimally 225,000 in grants. If you're an environmental justice community, you're eligible for up to 250, which I believe you all are. And then if you choose to do decommunization grants, you can apply for up to 500,000 with a 10% match if you're a environmental justice community. If you're not, it's a 25% match. So I believe you guys are environmental justice communities, so I think you would, there, I don't think, we border them, but I don't think we are them. We may have one precinct in town that is, but the town as a whole. Okay. And then lastly, I wanted to mention a new program that's available through DOE R. Related to this climate leadership program, Lisa Sullivan affectionately calls it Green Communities 2.0. So as part of this, it's still maintaining your good standing with green communities. You have to establish and maintain a local committee to advise, coordinate, and lead on energy and climate-related activities, commit to decommunization by 2050, and to provide a roadmap for doing so. A vehicle-first policy, continuing to maintain that. There's a specialized stretch code document that's required with this, and then some potential additional grant funding opportunities related to climate leadership best practices. There's some for additional solar PV, and many others. So this is a new initiative. This is what I know about currently, but if there's any specific questions related to this, I can certainly relay those to Lisa Sullivan, who will have more information on this. And then finally, the contact information for all the regional coordinators in Massachusetts, but of course, Lisa's information is here in the bottom right-hand corner. And so with that, I'll open it up for any questions you might have, and certainly we'll relay any questions I cannot answer to Lisa directly.
No, thank you for the presentation. It's really interesting and good to hear that we're ahead of where, where we're expected to be. I know Charlie's done a lot to get that, some of those grants in place and, and, you know, keep things on track, and we've had help from all the other departments.
Brian especially, and his crew have been instrumental in making sure that the projects are successfully installed
All that LED lighting.
and operating and everything. If he wasn't, you know, if he wasn't available, I don't think we would be halfway where we
Well, thank you, Brian.
It's always about Brian.
I didn't say that.
Again, the figures that you've been quoting, Paul, are incredible. When you look at 31.6% overall, right down the size of East Bridgewater, and it's a credit, all can decide, to Brian and all the people that have been working on this for the last five years, or four years, I guess, for the figures, and continued that great work. And if there's grant money out there, we should definitely be going after every penny of it.
Well, I think that's our intention. There's another competitive round this fall, I don't know, they haven't announced it yet, though, have they?
It has been announced.
Okay, what's the deadline?
So the deadline is October 18th.
Okay. So we're going to work with Chris Collins again, from the firm that's been doing this, all this work, to get in a proposal in time.
Okay, good.
We've already reviewed a few, several projects that will fit into that grant. All of them are going to be at the water department.
And all that data will go to me, and I will compile the application for the town and submit it to DOE R on your behalf.
Okay.
Great.
Paul, we appreciate everything you're doing.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yes, the Old Colony Council, and they continue to do a great job, they're doing.
Thank you.
Okay, that wraps up our appointments. Let's go to Action Item 10 first.
Action Item 10. Okay, we're going to skip to Action Item 10, and discuss and approve for the change of manager from the Commercial Club of East Bridgewater pending submission of a Coria request form for the.
Kevin, if you'd just like to move up to the mic. Welcome.
Thank you, thank you, all of you.
So you.
You say that now.
David, just for the, our audience, who is this?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Because it's not, it's in the agenda about changing manager, but it's not saying
That's true, it doesn't, doesn't say.
Kevin Lasalle. Lasalle, oh, I'm sorry. So you're taking on this challenge, what, a couple, one week before the Chowder Fest?
Absolutely.
Good, good choice, Kevin.
It wasn't a choice.
Shows a lot of character, I must say. So what's your background, Kevin?
I was in corrections for 32 years, 10 months, two weeks.
Well, then you will be.
Give and take.
I make a motion to approve.
I've been the assistant manager for, since November.
Okay.
I've been bartender there for about eight years. And then this happened, and they asked me to do it. Will I step up? And sure.
Good for you.
Didn't plan on working 40 hours after I retired, but I guess I will.
Go where you need it.
And a local resident too, which is always good.
Yes.
Yeah, good. Good luck, I'll let the town motion.
I make a motion that we appoint Kevin Lasalle as the manager at the Commercial Club.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Just keep turning in those vet forms to the board.
Right. Oh, yeah, those are nice forms.
Six-month job, that's all.
Okay, so.
All right, Kevin.
Come see, come see us and let us know how it's going.
We'll have you back next meeting.
Right.
Good luck with the chili Chowder Fest, in all seriousness. I hope you have good weather, it's not like last Saturday.
It was supposed to be, supposed to be good.
Good.
Right.
And we got a lot more contestants this year. We got like almost doubled with the contestants this year.
Great.
A lot of people, they had that whole, after COVID happened, and we kind of lost a few, and now they're all starting to come back.
Great, we'll have a great event.
Awesome, thank you.
All right, Kevin, good luck.
Thank you very much.
Ready for regular order?
I am, ma'am.
All right. I make a motion to approve the minutes of the September 9th, 2024 Select Board's meeting.
Second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I make a motion to approve but not release the minutes of the September 9th, 2024 Select Board Executive Session Meeting.
Second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of the September 12th, 2024 Select Board's meeting.
Second, any discussion?
So I wasn't there, but this is that rule of necessity, right?
Well, except that even with the rule of necessity, I don't think you can vote.
Otherwise, you won't be able to approve them today.
Well, yeah, until Peter comes back. It's not necessary that we get it done right tonight.
Okay.
If, if, if there was a time limit or something, I would say yes.
We'll just wait for it back on. Number three. Yeah, remember that was, you guys did it virtually? Oh, okay, I wasn't, okay, yep. Yeah. Okay, review and discuss employment letter for the building commissioner.
Right, and that, that was approved, you know, by
Right.
two percent, but we just want it officially on the record, that's all, and the letter's in your, I believe it's in there.
Do you want us to vote it?
Yes, please.
I make a motion that we approve the employment letter as drafted for the building commissioner.
Second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The only one thing he did ask about, in which the board can come back to do this, is that he did ask for an increase from 15 days of vacation a year to 20. I know we have several other department heads of similar seniority that are getting 20 days of vacation.
Okay.
And so I said to, you know, he said, well, don't, I don't want to bother anybody, but I said, if other, you know, seriously, if you're going, if we have other department heads making the request, receiving it, it should go to the board also.
All right, we'll, we'll put it on discussion for later.
Yeah. That sounds good. Discussion of possible solutions for Old Plymouth Street regarding safety and traffic.
Right, so I have been in contact with John Haynes, who's our TPW director, and also with his counterpart over on, in Bridgewater. John had gone out to take a look at the site. He said he thinks that the signage that is there for the no trucks on either end is sufficient. I know there's a disagreement about that, but his feeling is the folks making a left-hand turn from 104 onto Old Plymouth Street to head towards 106 in that direction, rather than taking a slightly longer way around. This, this signage is there, visible enough that they shouldn't be making that turn. He doesn't, he doesn't think that there are many trucks making that turn, but again, that might be a difference of opinion. He does not see lowering the speed limit as having any effect, as the enforcement of whatever the speed limit exists is going to be more important than the actual speed limit, and given our resources, you know, and they don't make here, but, you know, as I was telling another resident about another street here, you know, we've only got, let's say, two vehicles, even if they were dedicating themselves to traffic enforcement, it's one vehicle versus how many miles of road on any given day. So there's a limit as to how many hours a week, or how many hours a month that we can particularly enforce speed limits on any one particular street. But I know, you know, for John, he thinks that the enforcement's more important than the signage.
But don't you think, or do you want to continue with that?
No, go ahead, yeah.
I mean, I don't want to say this in front of the police chief, but we all sort of have this thing where we know, like, if the speed limit's this much, we can know that, you know, you can go five miles over, and you, you know, and not that I would ever do that, chief. Never, I would never.
Is that true?
But I know some people do drive that way. So, you know, there is a case for lowering the speed limit in that, the way that people self-regulate, adhering to a speed limit.
And I believe it, I see it as thickly settled, I see no reason why, I mean, it shouldn't change, how to put it, it doesn't place us in any worse situation to lower it to 25 or 30 if the board wanted to do so. We don't have any additional liability, in essence, the liability is with the drivers on that road for obeying the new speed limit. If the board did that, obviously, we'd pass the information along to the department, we would ask John to put up new signage reflecting that, and then, you know, they could enforce it on the basis of that lower limit if the board felt that was a way of trying to lower the difficulty, lower the number of problems that we're having with the street.
Okay, thank you.
And just, when manpower allows it, like Charlie said, I mean, we try to be firm, fair, and consistent throughout the town. Obviously, we had the four-way intersection, and we, we do have an issue with the red lights in the center of town that we're, we're going to be discussing further, John Haynes and I, in the future. But we try to put our traffic signs up in the areas where we can, but like I said, when the manpower allows it, we put the enforcement out there. That's why we write the grants, even when I get the grants, we get grants. That's why we write the grants, even when I get the grants, we get grants every year, we, we focus on the high-traffic areas, and that'll definitely be added to the area for the next grant round.
What we need is an educational video for the four-way, I mean, I was there going over to Belmont Street earlier today, and there were people, that wasn't people out of turn, people weren't taking their turn, they were just sitting there, kept, you know, someone would wait for three or four cars to go by in the other direction before trying, you know, I'm sorry.
I agree a hundred percent.
It's been, it's been fifty years, but I remember dry reset, and you take turns going around the round.
It's not, it's not a very hot concept, but...
Maybe we could send them over to Whitman, because they seem to handle the four-way in Whitman.
They've been there a long time.
Yeah, but they've been there for twenty years.
So it'll take some time.
They'll get there, they'll get there.
And when the manpower allows it, I've been having them up there, we really haven't, knock on wood, we haven't had an accident since, so I shouldn't have said that, but...
I, I mean, I can hear, hear it now.
I'm just saying, that solution has worked to this point, as long as they don't, and we put the do-not-block-the-intersection signs up, so hopefully they catch on with that. Like I said, we've been stopping, you know, a few cars here and there and getting the message out, you know? So I think eventually that's going to be even better than it is right now, hopefully.
I haven't heard any complaints at all about it.
Knock on wood, we, we've had...
It's, it's working, I go through there many times a week, and there are those that sit there and say, what am I going to do? And that's fine, they can finish their coffee and then take off, but, you know, they, they seem to adjust to it fairly well. There are some individuals, that's always going to happen.
Yep.
But I, I think it's working great.
John and I have kept a close eye on it, so I like, I monitor it daily. Like I said, we, we do have an issue in the center of town, but that's a whole D O T thing that, I actually had some discussions with John Haynes the other day on that, I'll follow up with the, with the Charlie and the board in the next meeting, probably.
I have talked with one of the merchants at the intersection there, and he said that mostly there's a lot of colorful language that is yelled out windows.
Oh, pretty soon it'll be called, they won't have their windows up.
And a lot of waving and hand gestures.
Yes, yeah, they think there's a care about that.
Well, as a resident, I think it's a really great idea.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, because we talk about it all the time, and they say that's the best thing that's happened in the intersection. For the dance school, too, that's, yeah.
Right, yeah.
Thank you.
And then the third area was on speed bumps, and neither John nor his counterpart are advocates of speed bumps. And I know, obviously, a number of communities now have speed bumps in them, it might be, and I'll go into a different offshoot of all these street topics, but it may be something that John could discuss with the board. I think he's interested in talking to the board more, because if we were going to institute a speed bump program, not just for Old Plymouth Street, the pro, whether it's Old Plymouth or Belmont, or any other place that we've been getting calls on, I suspect we'll need to do it as sort of as an experimental model in a few locations at once, because we know we're going, the minute that we have speed bumps placed on any particular street, we're going to be getting requests for speed bumps on a number of streets.
I think with, with the calls we seem to be getting, the people that, you know, rightfully say, you know, that every town has people at speed, I mean, you can't be there all the time, but, you know, I know when I was talking with John Haynes a while ago, I guess Bridgewater has a traffic study committee over there, and I think based on what's happening now, that we should seriously, as a board, try and put a, a committee like that together.
And John had said he's interested in doing something like that.
So let's, let's work on that, getting some people that really understand stuff like that, get a committee together and bring something back.
I second that motion.
Before we get to the end of tonight, I'll, we can bring that back up, yeah. So that's where I'm at, in terms of talking to Bridgewater and talking to East Bridgewater.
As Carol said, I think, you know, lowering it to twenty-five miles per hour, we can talk later on to it. I think it's, it can't do anyhow.
Right, and it might...
Can't do anyhow, could help somewhat.
Is, is there anything I can, or how would I address it to the postmaster again, probably? Just, just not for giggles, but see if, probably like...
Now, do you, do you, you have me able to deliver from East Bridgewater, or from Bridgewater, or does it depend on what side of the street?
It's weird, we see like three of them come on the street all the time, one passes by, and one would stop, but then they, they do turn back up the street. So the postmaster, when I talk to him, he says, oh, they're not supposed to be going back down that street. So I'm like, they do, but I hope I didn't get anybody in trouble, but, you know, they, you know, they do to like deliver packages, or just to go back to either, they're going to East Bridgewater, going some other place, but they do return around, but...
Yeah, it can hurt to talk to both postmasters.
Yeah, because...
Say there's a problem, see if they can...
Now, is it the postmaster in Bridgewater as well, or is it just the East Bridgewater?
I started East Bridgewater.
Yeah, I did, he said, um, he says if, if we do that for you, we're going to have to do it for four thousand other...
Yeah, we hear that all the time.
Yeah, yeah, so it's kind of, we're just a small little street, you know, and it's, um, yeah, it's that, that bend is, they, they just take off on that bend, you know, motorcycles too, every, everybody, you know? It's, um, even the trucks, I'm also surprised that the trucks would not slow down going around that bend, continuing down, and it's kind of, you know, but, um, yeah, just that, that would, that would help out. I don't know how to, I know I did talk to him over there, you know, he said he went to do a site, you know, but I told him I was coming to the meetings here, so I, I think he kind of, like, waved it off a little bit. But I'll reach out to him again.
Is he quaking in our authority?
Yeah, it can't hurt to talk to him again.
Yeah.
See what he says.
All right.
Okay, good luck there, and I said we'll put a committee together and...
Yeah.
See what more we can do.
All right.
Needs a representative at large.
We do that committee.
I don't know if we should have someone on the committee that has a major problem.
Probably not. Yeah, I suppose not, but...
But they can always go to the meeting.
Well, or, or at least...
Well, and then it becomes a working group, and not just us sitting up here like, oh, come back in two weeks.
But also, if you have a person with a problem, it's where, you know, basically, they've got to recuse themselves, they get to sit over...
That's true, you wouldn't be able to make a decision.
Right.
Maybe when your problem is solved.
So how, from here on, what do I do? Just still visit, or?
Well, let's take it in pieces, so I think the only thing the board might be doing tonight is to officially vote to reduce the speed limit on Old Plymouth Street to twenty-five miles per hour.
Okay.
Or to thirty, whatever the board's pleasure is.
Yeah.
I think on the other things, nothing's, at least at this point, nothing's going to be happening with the speed bumps, I think that might be something this committee might be examining sometime in the future, not just for that location, but for other locations.
Okay.
And then, as I said, for the signage, John felt it was adequate in terms of informing truck traffic that it's a no-truck road. So that's, I mean, that's where we're at, at this...
Regardless of enforcement, I'll make sure that we, you know, keep a good eye on it, and we have so many traffic signs, we rotate them through the area, so, but, speed signs, we'll, I'll put some in that area continually as well.
Okay.
Yeah, it's visible with the, with, when all the leaves are down, when there's a lot of leaves, the overgrowth, you really can't, you know, see that sign when you get up to it, you know?
Well, I get, and next spring, after the leaves come back in, if you want to take another photograph, and bring, bring it back to the board to show what the problem is.
All right, so as far as following up with the, the speed bumps, or...
As I said, for the speed bumps, I suspect that the committee would take, if, you know, we, once we get a committee, again, it won't be just for that location, I think the committee would make a recommendation to the Select Board about whether the town should get, you know, some sort of speed bump policy, and maybe some experiments to see what works, what doesn't work, but it's not going to be, you know, that's not going to be next week or next month, or anything like that. In a sense, we might get a committee started, but, you know...
When that committee is formed, we can, we can let you know.
Yeah, that would be perfect, yeah.
Going on, they might want to have like a form, like for people to fill out, to, to give to the members of the committee for an area that's a concern, so there's a way of keeping track of all that.
All right, that would be perfect.
Okay.
Well, thank you.
Some progress anyways.
Yeah, yeah, well, well...
Government works so slowly.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, that's, I know, I know. All right, I appreciate your time.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we want to vote on that speed limit now, or do you want to come back to that later?
Do it now, we're on Old Plymouth Street.
I make a motion that we lower the speed limit, is it a specific section on Old Plymouth?
No, the entirety of Old Plymouth Street.
Okay.
As it's been, it's a, qualifies as a thickly settled road.
Okay, I make a motion that we lower the speed limit to twenty-five miles per hour on the Old Plymouth Street area that is qualified, that is identified as thickly settled.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, just, since we're going to, we may get back to the committee also, but let me, we also had a couple other road problems, would this be a good place for me to bring those up?
Yeah, might as well.
So Joe Hayes from three twenty Belmont Street had visited the Select Board office during the last couple of weeks, similar problems, speeding and truck traffic. He'd like the speed bumps placed, what I'm going to inform him is, if we get this committee, that we can put that on the list. He's concerned about vehicles traveling east on Belmont Street after stopping at Summer Street and Belmont Street intersection, because these vehicles tend to accelerate past the speed limit. Basically, they reach a stop point there at Summer and Belmont and say, okay, now I can go, vroom, and, you know, they're going by the soccer field areas. He'd like to have a truck exclusion on that section of Belmont Street from Elm Street and to Summer. The problem is going to be, it's about a zero-point-six-mile segment. Whether, if, assuming someone, let's say, is coming off of Highland and hits, wants to go to Belmont Street, it would be going north, going up Elm and then down Summer, it's one and a half miles. If you do it the other direction, going down Elm and then back up to, up Summer, it's two-point-four miles. I don't, the board could always vote to have, you know, wouldn't do it tonight, I'd be getting a lot more input from the residents in the area, but I don't know that Mastout would accept this. Admittedly, we don't have to worry about another community, one of the things they do look is how far, how big a detour do the trucks have to do? And the thing, other problem, and I talked to Mr. Hayes about this, is that in that neighborhood, if we're moving trucks, you're always going through a residential neighborhood, so that as much as one neighborhood, street might not want the truck traffic, another street's not going to want the truck traffic either.
Yeah, all we're going to do is create a problem on Summer or Elm if we divert it that way, so we can divert them to, you know, one oh six, like we did, you know, over here with Clodagh Street.
And I think this all would come up with the committee.
I love this committee already.
The Police Department did install one of the small speeding signs, basically saying your speed is this, it doesn't say what the speed limit is, but at least it reminds people there's maybe a speed limit someplace in the area, heading west on Belmont towards Summer, and Chief McLaughlin, Deputy Chief McLaughlin had written that the department's going to add this area to its traffic requests for extra patrols and radar. So that's, on that. Batty Street, Glenda Corey had, who lives there, had wanted Batty Street repaved. It still has what I always called, when I was seeing my grandparents up in Medford back more than fifty years ago, I always called it the purple asphalt.
Uh-huh.
Particular color of asphalt that you'll see from streets built, that were paved a number of decades ago. There's no sidewalk on Batty, which means she needs to walk on the road, and she feels it's in poor enough condition. She's, I think, in her eighties, and she wants a smooth street to walk on, but there's no sidewalks there. I think John had written you all about his pavement management report a couple of weeks ago, Batty's listed, in fact, under major rehabilitation. So is three-point-six million dollars of work listed under major rehabilitation. Almost all of it on many of the small subdivision roads, including Batty. Batty by itself is only, was only listed as about forty-four thousand dollars, but it's only, it's one of a large number of roads in that condition. The only thing I can tell her would be that, you know, here's the pavement management report, here's where we are in terms of being able to finance it, and that, I'm sure John has it on his list, but we can't promise a year as to when it's going to get repaved at this point. Then Hubbard Street, which is one of the streets that has a stub that goes into Robin's Pond from the west side of it, not Robin's Pond Road, which is it, or Drive, or whatever lane, whatever it is, which is a whole different issue that I still need to do more research on, but I know that a few weeks ago, we had folks who had come in asking about the access to the pond via some of these streets that are east-west streets, Hubbard being one of them. And what I found out was that the town did accept Hubbard from Bixby to Hillcrest, and was very specific about saying that in nineteen forty-six. The Select Board at the time put it in the...
No, I don't remember that.
I was thinking maybe that was like your second term.
Put it in their report specifically describing this, and the vote at town meeting was the same. And the thing is that Hubbard, all, the original layout for Hubbard extended west towards the next north-south street, but it was specifically, nope, we're not doing that, we're just this one segment of Hubbard, and also specifically saying, we're only doing it to Bixby.
Did one of them live in that?
I don't know, but it did include the stub. And I, my understanding is that one or more residents are having a property dispute about who has access to traverse that stub in for Hubbard. And my answer is going to be, is ultimately, you're going to need to settle in Land Court. The town has no role in making a determination about a civil property rights case. I don't mean, you know, it's not civil rights, but in a sense of, the Ds and such may refer to Hubbard and may allow, give you access to the pond via Hubbard or other streets that run into the pond, but that's a determination for the Land Court to make as to who can prevent somebody else from using Hubbard, or not prevent, or whatever, and that's...
And we all know how long it takes to go to Land Court.
Well, yes, but it, so I'll be replying on that. And then if you want to go back to having a, a street advisor, a traffic advisory committee, when we had one in Halifax, we had, obviously, we had the equivalent BPW, because we had a highway surveyor, also represented some police and fire on there. We had somebody from the school on it, I think because at least originally, some of the traffic issues dealt with Plymouth Street and traffic around the school, and that's why we were including it. We had at least one, if not a couple, with non-town officials on it. Either was, and either, I was, either me or a member of the Select Board on there also. But the board's welcome, obviously, to put together whatever combination of candidates it would like, or representation it would like.
I think definitely...
I think it's an, but to point out that it's an advisory committee that would come back to the Select Board for, with recommendations, it might be speed limits, it might be the issue with speed bumps, you know, how, the commercial vehicle exclusions, things like that.
Would have to give them some kind of a mission statement on what they should be looking at. This would be probably a good opportunity for Rebecca to get involved, rather than someone from the board that her, that her...
Yeah.
You're going to buy, you're going to drive the big rig.
Not something else on your plate, Charlie, but Rebecca could, could do.
We're going to talk about it.
Where it's brand new, you can, yeah.
Do some fieldwork. Drive around, sit there, watch the cars go by, speeding away.
We need a tool in this scenario.
We'll talk about that later.
Yeah.
So maybe...
She need us to like, to make it, can we do that?
Well, if you want, if you want, if you want it not, let's, I mean, we could, I know we'll have a short meeting on the seventh. Maybe Rebecca and I can put together a charge and representation.
Yeah, good idea. I like that. Great.
That it?
Yep.
Back to, where are we?
Six.
Session of possible rescinding, opera projects and approval of new projects.
Right.
So we have a note here from Melanie.
Yes.
And you're good with these?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, you know, we went over the projects, both the ones for the Plymouth County money, which seem to be, at this point, at least going well enough that we don't, I don't think we have a danger of losing funds. We have a couple of backup projects as possibles. If we don't think something's going to play out, the library, where we did the HVAC system is also in connection with the roof project there. Ventilation of buildings should qualify according to Plymouth County. So that if we end up with funding that is unused for Plymouth County, we have a project that should be able to fill in that slot.
Okay.
How much would that, Brian, how much would be for that ventilation?
I broke those numbers out this afternoon from Melanie. I think the HVAC part of that project was like three hundred and eighty thousand.
My library got new HVAC last, system last year was one point eight million.
Well, the whole project was one point two, but that included.
We have mini splits now.
And structural enhancements.
All right, well then.
But then on the town money, what she's suggesting is that now that we've eliminated, or not eliminated, but we took a couple of projects off the list because using the town money that we now have money available on our, our end was to pay twelve thousand five thirty-nine ninety-three for the final invoice for the town hall police department generator because we have a final invoice that was not taken into consideration when the bond was completed. So we have money that, we need to find funds to pay this last invoice.
Okay.
And our money is all revenue reduction money. It doesn't need to qualify a particular category so that we have the money available. We have a project that will fit within the requirements, and I'd recommend the board do that. And then also, talking about Plymouth County, we have money available out of Plymouth County for one hundred and thirty-five seven thirty-seven for sidewalk repair and construction on Maple Avenue. This would be similar to the Union Street project that was previously approved. We don't see a reason that Plymouth County, having said yes to sidewalks for Union Street, would say no to this project. Obviously, if they do, we'll turn around and work out something, but.
Okay. I make a motion to approve the use of twelve thousand five hundred and thirty-nine dollars and ninety-three cents of state opera money to pay the final invoice for the town hall police department generator project.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye. I make a motion to use one hundred and thirty-five thousand seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars of our Plymouth County opera money for sidewalk repair construction on Maple Avenue.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye. All right. I make a motion that we appoint Charlie Seale.
Oh, approve, authorize.
To sign the contract, right?
You're going to authorize me rather than appoint.
Make a motion that we authorize Charlie Seale to sign the architect contract for the central school with Raymond Design Associates, Inc.
Second. Discussion?
I understand this was everybody's first choice, the MSBA and the committee. So that worked out well.
Right, so RDA is, let's go back. You have the central school project going on. Several months ago, we picked Left Field as our owner's project manager. They worked with us to request, do a request for services from architectural and design firms so that we could get the feasibility study and then the schematic plan completed as part of the central school elementary project. We had six firms who had submitted proposals. In the end, two of the, we had three firms that were brought, that the MSBA were going to interview a couple of weeks ago. We ended up with two, one of them dropped out. RDA was clearly the favorite, not just by the town's representatives, on the MSA, MSBA design selection board, but also the members from the state clearly recommended RDA. Their proposal and their, the contract fits within the budget, meets all the check boxes, all the boxes get to be checked according to Left Field of the various requirements outside of budget. You know, for instance, women and minority business enterprise participation, as an example, all the other boxes are getting checked. So everything's, once we've had this approved by the board tonight and I've signed it, we'll be able to meet with the MSBA on a startup meeting next week and really get this project underway. I mean, I know it's been a long haul, you know, going through the hiring of an LPM, going through the hiring of an architect, and it seemingly, little work's gone and done, but this is how the MSBA operates in terms of these major school projects. Since they're putting up a major portion of the funding for this, we're following their rules. And, but what will happen now is we'll actually be able to start looking at what our needs are for the central elementary school in terms of space and facilities and everything else. Look at various sites, look at possible ways of either doing renovations of building, move the building, sort of footprint around, what should stay, what should go, and get to a point where we'll then be able to pick an option, get a schematic design for that, and come back to the town. It will still be a number of months, but all this will be done through the meetings of the central school and elementary school building committee. Those are open to the public, and so the public will have, be very much involved in this and be able to participate in this process.
Okay.
Questions?
Nope. We're meeting tomorrow.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
You already made a motion, I believe. You already made a motion.
I did make a motion, yep. Okay, I make a motion to appoint Ryan Earl, Council on Aging, effective September ninth twenty twenty-four to June thirtieth twenty twenty-five, to fill a vacancy.
And this was a change, because I know we appointed him two weeks ago, but we had to do a specific date on this one, because it was a vacancy.
Dead of just three years, it was just to.
All in favor?
Aye. I make a motion to appoint Megan Crosby, Town of East Bridgewater Collector of Taxes and Treasurer, as custodian of tax possession property as printed.
Yeah, sure, you can do that.
Second. Any discussion?
Just as this was necessary, one of the reasons, one of the things we needed to do as part of the land sale was to officially recognize her under this statute, so we're doing so.
All right, all in favor?
Aye. We already did the commercial club. I make a motion to approve the request from me. Carol Julius of the Quanis Club of East Bridgewater for the use of Satcham Rock parking lot. Members will park their vehicles during the day for an event on the Cape, and a bus is transporting members.
Any particular day?
It's not printed here, but it's this coming Saturday, the twenty-eighth. I did the, I filled out the thing.
We assume you're going to be there all day, park and leave and come home and.
So it's, I think the bus is coming at like eleven and returning at five. Does that sound right, Zach? You don't know? It's, so it's not all day into the night, but it's, the event is down at Bourne Scenic Park. It's for the installation of our new president and board of, and officers and board of directors. And our incoming president is a camper there, and that's why he's having the event there. But rather than having everybody drive from East Bridgewater, they're car, they're going on a bus from Lucini.
Do we have anything else going on there that day, do you know?
No, Nancy Hill approved it. But said that it needed to come to us for the actual vote.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye, thank you. I will let Albert know. I make a motion to approve the request from Deana Lapine of East Bridgewater Community Gardens for the use of Satcham Rock Outdoors for Community Gardens Cleanup Day, Saturday, October fifth twenty twenty-four, from ten AM to one PM, rain date of Sunday, October twentieth twenty twenty-four.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. And that's it, there were no additional action items, right?
No.
Just the other things, okay, that's it for action items, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Charlie?
So opioid funds. As part of the settlement and part of the state involvement in the settlement, the town has to submit every year at the end of each fiscal year, a report on how it spent its opioid funds. Fiscal twenty-four, we didn't spend anything, so it was a very easy report. But it was very clear from the questions that were asked as part of the report that the expectation is that the town will be working with the community to determine how best to use these funds. At least initially, what we're doing right now is supporting Plymouth County outreach because they're using our IT services. And so in order to cover their share of the costs, we're using some of the opioid funds to do that. Because elsewise, if we, if they had to spend themselves off, they'd be spending that much more money doing so. However, I don't, I don't think that was necessarily the only thing that was intended back when the opioid settlement was done. We need to be doing outreach to the community, to residents who have, suffering addiction or recovery. We need to talk to families and friends of those people in terms of outreach, how they can help out. Work with service agencies to determine what are the best ways of helping those who are in need. Because it's a multifaceted program. It's not just addiction recovery services, but it can be food insecurity, it can be housing, it can be job training, there can be any number of aspects to assist people and their families through the situation that they're having. What I, but that means going out and doing the work in a sense of having public forums, having maybe a committee of some sort, another committee, I understand. But maybe to start off with inviting Plymouth County outreach to come in to, because they should have some, at least data that we can use initially in a sense of how many people are suffering from that, how many people are needing services, whether it's those who are addicted or in recovery, but also families and friends and such, you know, do employers need assistance? What can we be doing on the issues like housing and food insecurity? But to have them come in because whether it's working with them in the future or working with any other nonprofit or another agency, we need to be able to show that, not, you know, we have the data, but also we, we, you know, they talk about outreach, we need to be able to at least have some initial meetings, forums, whatever, to gather input, not just via a survey, but from in-person. Because we're going, we're going to be funding these programs for at least a couple of decades as the money comes in. We can't, it's obvious, given the amount of money we're talking about here in East Bridgewater, we're not going to be a solo operation. While we have sufficient money to hire somebody today, that money would rapidly run out if we hired one full-time person. And then we don't even know if there are people out there who have the ability to do this, and it's a multi, you know, we talked about all these facets of this, whether one person can cover all that territory. That's why I think working with various nonprofit agencies in the area would probably best suit the town. But we need to figure out what we want those agencies to do, and to do that, we need to find out from the people themselves what help they need. So what I'd like to propose is Plymouth County come in, probably not on the seventh, since we, obviously, we're going to have a minute meeting before the town meeting, but maybe on the twenty-first, and work out how we should be spending, at least starting, let's get some data, let's figure out how big of a problem is here in East Bridgewater, and figure out ways of then getting the word out to the townspeople that we're interested in their input as to how we should proceed about spending these funds, not just in the next year, but in the next couple of decades.
We need to talk with the police chief about this stuff. I've asked him on one occasion, see, when he goes down to his meetings to see if we can get together with other towns.
Yep.
And so, and that's just never materialized over the last three years. We've been trying that, and I have talked to one of the coalitions out of Brockton, you know, what can we do with them, stuff like that, but they can't accept money from us, okay? And they can provide us with some information and stuff like that, then they, we may be able to bring them in here also. But they can't take the, we can't give them ten thousand dollars and say, here's what you want. They're not allowed to accept it.
Right, now which agencies is?
I think it's acting coalition for change.
Okay.
But it's all of those, they're not allowed to take it from another. We are considered nonprofit.
Mm-hmm.
Right. I know one of the things we're doing in Carver is we're partnering with some of the agencies there, and they're putting pamphlets in the library, we're buying a rack with the money, and we're going to have pamphlets in the library on all the various things and resources for if you need to go to a treatment program, like all those kinds of things, so, you know.
The library, council on aging, school buildings, for that matter.
Yeah, they got some grant money to go along with it too, that's for some personnel.
Okay.
And the river stewardship grant program application, just need the board to approve the acceptance of the grant. So what Alex and John Haynes had done during the last couple of months was work with the Tonto River Watershed stewardship, and they were able to get a grant, I think it's for forty-five hundred dollars, to do a small, a cleanup of a small portion. I can't remember which river it is, one right out here.
Matfield?
No, not the.
Sutucket.
Sutucket, yes, thank you. This is, this is not a pollution cleanup, this is a removal of branches and limbs and such. So that people can make passage along the river by kayak canoe. It's not going to solve, you know, deal with all the problems there, but it's a starting point. Because one of their goals for Tonto River is not just the Tonto River, but the tributaries to make those accessible to the public. And what you do, can do that by canoe and kayak, but then what you need to do is get the river clear so that someone can in fact go up and down it. So the board could.
Need a motion for that?
Yes, please.
I make a motion that we approve signing the river stewardship grant program application.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And the other thing that wasn't here, Deputy Chief McLaughlin had contacted me earlier today. The, I guess there's preparation at work for the East Bridgewater Police Department to be fully certified. And the ceremony is October thirtieth during the day. There's a lunch at the Marlboro Country Club, so he's asking whether any members of the select board would want to attend.
You should go. I'll have to work. Marlboro? Yeah. That's great, though, they've been working on that for a long time.
But they have.
That's awesome.
Yeah, accreditation committee.
That's great.
That is. That's been a long time, long process. How many chiefs?
Maybe we can have them in on November fourth.
That's a good idea. Please stand by.
Okay, I'll do that.
Okay, I'll tell Mike, both mics. That's it. Rebecca?
I'm just, there is, there's no meeting here at town hall on October seventh. We have special time meeting at the junior senior high school, seven o'clock. The warrant is available online, it's available at town hall, the COA, the library, all the town offices. If anybody has any questions about any of the articles, they can call our office.
Though we might redirect some of them, depending on the zoning ones back up to the.
I had somebody reach out to me, and I'm going to forward you the message they sent because I, I am not qualified to answer all of this, so.
Okay. More discussions, anything, Carol?
Nope.
I'd just like to thank the East Bridgewater Business Association for their expo yesterday.
I saw your picture.
The weather cleared there, where?
Send Natalie Miller posted a picture on Facebook, and you were in it.
It was great, they.
I was, sorry, I missed it.
The crowds were good during, later in the day, once the weather cleaned out, and a lot of new people there, which is great for the town, and I'm glad they brought that back a couple of years ago and continue to do so. So thank you to all of them. That is it.
All right. Executive, yes?
Sure.
Okay, take me longer to read all this than?
Probably.
I make a motion to close open meeting and enter executive session and not return to open session pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one A two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, building commissioner, zoning enforcement officer, director of assessing, IT director, town accountant, assistant town administrator and town administrator pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one A three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares. Firefighters, superior officers, clerical, DPW, dispatchers, superior officers, patrol officers, library, pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one A nine, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation as the chairs determine that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the town's litigating position in a matter involving Town of East Bridgewater versus Ritter Farm. Vote to close executive session and not return to open session. Carol Julius, aye.
Deputy Chief, aye. Thank you, see you on the seventh at junior senior high school.
All in meeting.